... June 13th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education's a regular meeting. Our call to being to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartz?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our first presentation item is from the OSBA recognition of Board Member Service, Kim Miller Smith. Is she here? Hi, Kim.
She is. Happy.
Good morning or good evening. I'm slightly confused. Well, thank you for greetings from the Ohio School Board Association and thank you for allowing me to be with you this evening. It is a pleasure to be here. For most of you know, for people in the audience, the OSBA is divided into five regions and the central region is one of those. And we serve 14 central Ohio counties and 103 public school districts. I have some packets on your table that I have given you and I have some important information in those that you'll want to look at later on. The, we're promoting several activities right now. One is involvement in Kids PAC. We have some region awards in there, the exemplary employee award and the friend of public education award is in your packet. Student achievement fair, Olentangie is in the student achievement fair this year and we thank you for your participation in that. There is an application for outstanding board nominations, outstanding board member nominations, and for regional and state committees at OSBA. Our region, as you know, conducts a fall and a spring conference and we recognize the achievements of school districts, board members, teachers, and community members. But tonight I'm here on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association to recognize the longstanding service of and to present tonight to Olentangie Local Board of Education member, Kevin O'Brien, his 10-year milestone service award. Olentangie is blessed to have a high-performing and stable leadership team in all of you. Along with Mr. O'Brien tonight, Mr. Dave King was recognized in March for his 10 years of service. Julie Wagner-Feasel was recognized for earning the award of achievement. Also this past year, Mindy Patrick earned the points for the award of achievement. And Mr. Bartz has served the district in the very important role as the legislative liaison. So 100% of your board members have gone a step above and beyond and you also enjoy that in your treasurer and certainly your superintendent. So Kevin, would you please come forward?
(laughing).
Could I get somebody grab a photo?
You didn't go to the conference. They come to you.
All right, you can stand right here or right here, however you want to do it. I have for you your, the program and your names and if you're keeping a scrapbook.
Yeah, Simon.
He's a big scrapbook.
And I would like to read your certificate for you, distinguished board member. The Ohio School Boards Association recognizes Kevin O'Brien as a 10-year veteran board member and for continued dedication and commitment to public education as a school board member. Signed by Richard Lewis, the chief executive officer of OSBA, and John W. Hough, the president of the right. Thank you.
Okay, a bit of a self-serving agenda item.
That's what it's all about, you know.
The next presentation is Delaware County Finance Authority, Dan Ranky, the DCFA treasurer, please.
Oh, gosh.
We'll give you a little presentation here in a second.
You like big checks.
Had to make sure that you had the right number of zeros there.
That's a big, big check.
You know, so, well, I'm told, not a problem. Mark will be able to go down and get it cashed. Not any problems at all.
Like, who's, who's Happy Gilmore with all in the back of my car?
Thank you for having us here tonight and again, my name's Don Ranky. I'm the treasurer and chief fiscal officer for the Delaware County Finance Authority. I'd like to start off by introducing the Delaware County, I want to call them the Delaware County Commissioners Staff, you know, because we all kind of work for, no, we don't all kind of. They kind of tell us on a routine basis, we're working for them. But let me, I'd like to make some introductions. Dave Stage is the chair, chairman of our board for the Delaware County Finance Authority. Bill Bishop couldn't be here, he's from Westerville, he's our vice chair. Mayor John Benihoff, he is our secretary of the board and he's a great guy. And Vice Mayor Kent Schaefer couldn't be here, he's the vice mayor of Delaware. Scott Coverley and Frank Reinhardt, that makes up our board of seven. Our, the folks that we work with the closest, Bob Lamb, Bob, would you stand out? Bob, don't sit down yet, I want to say a couple of nice, I want to say a couple of nice things about Bob. He deserves more than a couple of nice ones. Bob joined Delaware County three years, four years ago and we've gone from zero to about 300 miles an hour in a very short period of time. And, you know, we try to kind of stay in the background with all the success stories, but we're approaching a billion dollars?
Probably.
Yeah, in the county.
I think it's close to even to your level.
A billion dollars in, you know, so, and three and a half, four years ago, it was right around zero. So we, Bill, well, I might be kind of pushed in there a little bit. But Bob's hard work is, just can't be understated. He's out working on relationships. He said to me the other day, "I wish that we had the relationship with the other school boards that we have with Olentangie School Board." And that's just an incredible compliment to you all. So thanks, Bob, for all your hard work. Mike Cromer, we didn't think he'd be here because he likes to go on vacation a lot. Where were you now, where were you living?
Hey, he's a district parent.
And, huh?
He's a district parent.
He's got to go on vacation.
Very supportive district parent.
Well, I was a district parent. And I had more, I had three kids in here.
You are.
So anyways, Julie, I'm sorry, didn't mean to do that. Mike's our county administrator. Robin Yokum, where's Rob? Oh, there, Rob, he's our marketing and public relations person. I can tell you that he's not related to Dwight Yokum, I know that for, I know that for sure. Orange Township trustee Ryan Rivers. In building partnerships and friendships to make everything work in Delaware County, you hear over and over again that Delaware County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, you know, top 10, so forth and so on. That doesn't necessarily mean it's good, but in this particular situation in Delaware County, because of Bob's hard work and Mike's hard work and the county commissioners' hard work, we've got phenomenally good growth. And we're going to tell you a little bit more about that. But I would like to ask Ryan, if you could come up and say a few words, we wouldn't mind.
Hi, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. And looking around at this group, the key word for me is partnership. And I can tell you for us at Orange Township, the commercial development, the infrastructure success that we've had, we can never do that alone as a township. So having the resources that are provided and the partnership and the relationships that we've built and working with the finance authority and, and working with the finance authority and the county have been critical. We recently had the success with the home road extension, which is something that's been worked on for many, many years. So to see that come together and become a reality was quite an accomplishment. But I look at it from a, the township standpoint, there's, there's 18 townships in Delaware County. We all kind of have our own little flavor, we all have maybe our own identity, but what's good for Orange usually is good for Genoa, it's good for Berlin. So it's okay to have our own, our own identity, but ultimately, for ultimate success, we want to be pulling together and working together as a team. And we've been able to do that and through our partnerships and working together as a team, we're getting able to get a lot done, have some, some success. And ultimately, we want to make sure that we're sharing and understanding our common goals and working towards a common vision for the county. So I want to thank you here tonight for being a great partner and a great teammate as part of this team and thank you, you know, for your support.
Thank you, Ryan. I'd said a few minutes ago that we work for the county commissioners in one way or the other. Several years ago, it's, it's kind of funny, 20 years ago, to write about right now, I was a Delaware city, city councilman. And one of the many task force or committees I sat on, I sat on the finance authority, it was called the Port Authority back then. And over the years after that, you know, I always wanted to know why we couldn't do more, we can do more. After years after that, kind of got disbanded, left, put aside. And a few years ago, our commissioners, you know, especially Commissioner Benton and Commissioner Merrill, they got together and they said, "Hey, we want to really support our economic development department." So Jeff and Gary and I, they're friends, I shouldn't call them by their first names, but I apologize. They worked really hard and diligent to put together a very good finance authority board. And we come from a lot of different backgrounds and so forth and so on. So I'd like to introduce Jeff and Gary and see if they would, Commissioner Merrill and Commissioner Benton and ask them if they come up and say a few words.
Right, well, thank you all. I'm Jeff Benton, I'm not Gary Merrill. And, but anyway, I'm one of the county commissioners. So I just want to say a few things about the finance authority and the success that it has helped us as a county achieve, as has been stated. A few years ago, I've, I've been a commissioner almost four years now. When I got on the, on the board, the finance authority was, was not very active, it wasn't doing much. So we, together, realized this is a much underutilized tool and a very valuable tool with all sorts of options at its disposal to bring, you know, the right kind of companies and businesses and jobs to Delaware County. So we refocused the, the finance authority, we recruited a great team of directors, there are seven directors that Don mentioned. These are all very successful business leaders, very savvy executives, very deal savvy, and they're very dedicated to the community. And so that combination has been enormously successful. But we're after attracting the right businesses and the right jobs. You know, we don't want just any business and any job. So we had to put a plan together and that's, was really Bob Lamb's first achievement. He put together a very strong economic development plan for the county. And it's been very successfully executed over the last three years plus, and the future is very bright. One of the main goals we're trying to achieve, and I'm sure you all can relate to it, is to better balance the tax base. You know, we have the worst of all the counties in the state, we have the worst ratio of commercial to residential tax base. And we are trying to change that. And we are making great progress, but it's not going to be easy, it takes a long time. So we've, we've really tried hard to put together the right sites, the right incentive programs, so that we can attract the right businesses and good-paying jobs. We've had a lot of success over the last three-plus years. We've, the finance authority has done, excuse me.
Finance authority.
Has done dozens of deals and there are dozens more in the pipeline. So we're, we're in very good shape going forward. We've, we've increased Bob's staff, I think three or four people we've added, just because there is so much going on. And bringing in fees for the finance authority, which helps us do, you know, invest in more infrastructure and so on. Just two things I want to mention specifically. Creekside is one of the projects that Ryan Rivers alluded to, that's right here, just down the street, right here in Orange Township. And that was, you know, was, obviously it wasn't just the finance authority, but they were a key partner in getting that done. And it's been hugely successful. But I would call that a line-drive single. The Berlin Business Park, which you've probably heard about, it's a 2,000-acre project up in Berlin Township, it's in the Olentangie School District. I know we've had some conversations about it, but that could be a grand slam. And that is a 2,000-acre business park, a lot of infrastructure's in place, but, you know, we have to have the right partners to make it successful. And the part, these are complex projects, the, we have to have sewer, we have to have water, we have to have the other utilities, we have to have roads, you know, if it's in a city, we got to get the city participate. If it's a township, as Ryan alluded to, we got to get a lot of things done in the township. And so, so they're very complex. Now, none of this is doable without the schools. Schools are a huge key player in doing that. And so I wanted to thank the Olentangie Local School District Board of Education and Superintendent Rafe, you know, we've had a number of conversations and he's been a huge part of making all these things happen. So anyway, I really appreciate that you all understand the long-term goals and what we're trying to do and we, because we couldn't do it without, without your support. So I want to thank you. And now I'll introduce Commissioner Merrill.
Thank you. Thank you. One of the disadvantages to going second, we have the same problem in the commissioner meetings, when I go second, it kind of takes, and I, so I don't want to be too redundant, but there are a couple of points I want to make that I think are important. Word you've already heard is partnerships. For, this is a great county. I love this county and we're doing a lot of great things in this county, but it's only possible because of the partnerships, whether we're talking about the nonprofits in our county who do amazing things. Many of those things you're aware of from your own personal contacts with them. And the beautiful thing is, everyone in this room, many in this room are involved in some of these nonprofits and makes it what it is. The schools in our county, Olentangie certainly, but all the other schools in our county, we have some of the greatest schools in the state of Ohio, something we should be very, very proud of. And it makes, it makes a difference. And I happen to live in the Olentangie school system, I'm a little prejudiced. But, but we're fortunate to have many great schools in our county. We talked a little bit about, and I saw a lot of nods when Commissioner Benton mentioned it, retailing in this county is not a problem, hasn't been a problem. We still have to be careful and watchful because we don't want a Northland or a Westland and when I came in here, into this state in 1986, those were pretty nice malls, but they're now gone. The same thing can happen here if we're not, we don't take care of what we have. And so we have to, we have to nourish it and we have to take care of it. But to this point, retailing's not been a problem. We all know rooftops has not been a problem. The area that we have to work on, the third leg of that three-legged stool, is creating jobs in our county, quality jobs in our county to keep us growing, to take some of the pressure off the residents in our county who are paying the taxes, as all of us are. And this grant that Don will talk a little bit more about in a minute, is just our effort and the finance authority's efforts to say, "Thank you for your role in this." You heard about the Berlin project, you heard about the project just up north here. But the other thing that we're doing is this east-west corridor, opening up the southern part of our county and getting this east-west corridor, which you all, is important to you because most of the school system is going to be affected with that in a very positive way. To get that finished, get that completed at a huge price tag, but it's something we need to do because access in our county east-west struggles. And so these are all the things that lie before us, these are all projects that we're working towards. But tonight, it's about saying thank you to Olentangie schools and with that, I just want to say thank you. That's welcome. Thank you, John. I have a little picture, but you wouldn't mind passing it around? You sure it's back down to these gentlemen down here, if you don't mind.
No, I said, oh, yeah.
That's your first state championship right there, the picture I'm passing around. And, and I'm, you know, proud to say that my middle son Morgan was a captain and, and played soccer and then my youngest son Brayden played soccer during those four or five real big glory years. Today, the Delaware County Finance Authority is presenting its first-ever AAA award for excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts, Olentangie Liberty High School. This $50,000 grant will be used to assist in the construction of a locker room facility for Liberty's, you know, soccer, baseball team, and other programs. The award was established because the members of the finance authority believe that quality schools are essential to recruiting quality talent and top-flight companies to Delaware County. The Olentangie School District is the largest school district in Delaware County. The economic success of Delaware County is intricately linked to the Olentangie School District. It's a privilege to work with such professionals as the members of the Olentangie Local School Board District in education and especially, don't want anybody to get upset with me up here, but especially Mark. Mark comes to all of our meetings, our annual meetings, he comes to our special meetings. We had Congressman Troy Balderson a few weeks ago to talk about infrastructure needs. And it's that type of open communication and partnership and you establish a lot of good friendships along the way and it leads to some incredible positive outcomes. You all are true community leaders and very supportive of what we call smart private and smart public development. In just over one year, Olentangie has supported approximately $200 million in infrastructure, $200 million in infrastructure, Olentangie School District has supported. In, I'd say, like I said before, I just want to say this again, in one, just one year, you know, the school board has supported over $200 million in infrastructure financing. That's just incredible. The AAA award for excellence in, in academics, athletics, and arts was created to help continue the economic development success that we enjoy in Delaware County. It is designated to enhance our county schools, whether it's in the classroom, on the athletic field, or in music, or in the art department. So we're going to be very proud to present this award to you. Mayor Benihoff, would you come up? And could I ask all the finance, the commissioners and all the finance committee members, Mike, that includes you too? And, Mike's my neighbor, by the way, Julie, so.
His son plays basketball for my husband.
Bill Bishop, you've probably heard that.
Bill, I work with at the Ohio Chamber of Commerce, yes, he's on one of my committees.
Can I have everybody stand up here except for John? Everybody. Do you want to take that check or not?
We're making you listen to a lot of our talking about the partnership, but we really are proud of this partnership and very happy about the partnership that the board and the superintendent have provided, the partnership with the authority. And I've been asked to read this resolution, I'll read an abbreviated edition of it. Whereas, Don Ranky made, moved that, whereas the board offers the academic, athletic, and arts grant, a community partnership grant, to entities and projects that have demonstrated historic and continued significant contributions to Delaware County community, such as effective efforts towards community betterment and positive leadership. And whereas, the Olentangie Local School District, the Olentangie Local Schools, is an eligible entity per the grant requirements. And whereas, the Olentangie Schools has submitted a grant application for funding assistance to benefit the construction of an athletic facility at the Olentangie Liberty High School. And whereas, the board recognizes and appreciates the partnership and continuing support of the Olentangie Schools and wishes to support the construction of the athletic facility per the application submitted. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Directors, Delaware County Finance Authority, Delaware County, Ohio, that the following resolution be and hereby is adopted.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
So, you know, from, from the board's perspective, partnerships work where there's an alignment of interest. We have a strong alignment of interest with the finance authority. In particular, I think Commissioner Benton said it best, we need to rebalance our tax base from residential and commercial. And anything we can do to support that rebalance, we're going to get behind those efforts. So definitely have a strong alignment of interest with the development plan and with the goals of the development plan. So thank you for the grant and thank you for your continued partnership.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just tried to top the self-serving presentation, you went first, I was second.
I had to jump you.
Thanks.
And we made it out, you just let me. All right.
Always a joker.
There's a personal letter in there from the board members, David Stage, your chairman of science. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the great job you're doing.
Appreciate it, thank you all for your support.
I had three sons go through here, they did great education.
Pass this on to Emily before I get in trouble.
We're giving this to the treasurer.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the work you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Feisel. Thanks for the work you guys do, you do a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I found this very enlightening, so I'm, because I, I knew I had heard of this, but I didn't know who all was involved and was on the board. So I appreciate you all taking the time to come to the meeting tonight.
Yes, thank you. They did that because they wanted you to know how important it was and how much of an honor it is to be able to give you this $50,000. And you deserve it, so thank you very much. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your donation.
Okay, a little bit hard to follow, but next presentation is a safety and security update. Joseph Suzy, I'm director of safety, security, and preparedness.
Thank you, sir. Thank you commissioners for that and I'll be sure to get with Mr. Meeker to make sure we have some security improvements in the facility as well. Thank you, members of the board, for inviting me to speak. I have a general presentation on the safety, security, and preparedness for the school district. However, it is important to know any specific questions the board may have, I'll, I'll be sure to stay afterwards. They may not necessarily be appropriate for public forum. So I began the position on October 1st, so I just finished about eight months worth. Mr. Randy Wright was sure to hit the ground run with me. I think in the first three weeks, we met every principal, was at every building, and then was told that the new state mandate to have the comprehensive emergency plans was, was due in about three weeks. So I was fortunate that I had some good help in Jennifer Iceman and Barb Norrie, and the three of us tackled it and we were able to get the comprehensive plans done for the state. I met with every building principal, administrator, every school, to include Oasis STEM, the transportation facilities. As you all know, you know, a very, very large, not only population, but for buildings as well. So in addition to reviewing the safety plans, this coming year, we are required to do a full-scale exercise, so that's what I'm spending this quote-unquote "slow" time when the students aren't in, to, to prepare for the full-scale exercise. Just want to note, and I do this at the beginning of every presentation, the exit signs, should there be an emergency, that door is locked and it'll only lead you to a closet, so don't go there. We have had some intermittent power issues today, so if the lights flicker, if the, you have your cell phones, I'm sure, I've got a flashlight with me, we can, we can see what we're doing. your cellphones, I'm sure, I've got a flashlight with me, we can see what we're doing. On a general note for, you know, safety and security, I'm just one person, right? There's 22,000 students, 2,000 staff. I'm going to do my best to make sure everyone plays a vital role. It's all our responsibilities as parents, as board members. I obviously don't take this job lightly. I, whenever I'm in a building, I look to know the location of any emergency equipment, fire alarms, AEDs, emergency medications, EpiPens. You approved my request to have Narcan in all our school buildings, which we do, we were able to get that for free. Hopefully, that stuff's never used, but we need to have it there just in case. So being proactive and raising the level of awareness, I feel, is a top priority of mine, so that we are all better prepared. If you're unclear about any safety protocols, ask immediately for clarification. And I say this to the PTOs that I speak with, the teachers, and all the staff. Early, when I got here in the fall, I held a training for all the administrators, all the principals. I held a training for all the bus drivers, let's not forget, transportation's vital role with all our students. I met with all the head custodial staff and their supervisors, because really, they're the eyes and ears of each building. And every time I'm in a school building, I go right to the secretaries and say, okay, what's really going on? Because they're the guardians, and I tell them they're the first first responders. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our physical security.
I just want to make sure, I'm going to interject with Joe's talking. That whole part of that vital piece of raising awareness is really a big part of what our communication's going to be about safety, because everybody wants us to solve all of these safety and security problems, or solve it with people, or all these resources. But that notion of everybody playing a vital role, it's sad that we have to think about it in that way, but my most recent example is one few months ago, while in mass. And I'm Catholic, so of course, I always sit in the same spot, and I notice the same people in the same spots. I noticed three people I'd never seen before, young-ish, wearing, having, carrying backpacks. I stopped paying attention to mass and paid attention to them, because, and thought about what I would do in the event of an emergency. But I think that's a mindset, and that's all, as a building principal, I always approached it, what I would do when I saw an intruder. I knew I'd be the first one probably shot, because I would have gone right to the, I always trained my mindset that way. But that's a big part of the work that Joe's doing, and we can do more with physical security and a lot of trainings and all those things, but raising that level of awareness, as he says, is going to be a big part of what we do.
Thank you, sir. So as far as the physical security goes, I obviously went to every building, conducted an assessment. We're currently in the process of adding safety vestibules to four of our older elementary schools. Mr. Gordon wanted me to pass along to you that deconstruction happened like the very first day of summer, the day after Memorial Day, and starting on Monday will be the actual construction of the safety vestibules, so they are going on. He was able to not only put the three vestibules in the three schools that are having the six additional classrooms, but we were able to meet with the architects and squeak out enough funding to get Sado Ridge done as well. So after this summer, we will have those four buildings and the four buildings that currently have the safety vestibules, but here's the part I'll just give you a little hint on, we have 17 to go. And if you want an approximate, or if now's not the right time, that's fine, but they cost about approximately $100,000 to do. So doing my simple math, that's about 1.7, that's going to be needed going forward. I want to talk to you a little bit about our camera replacement, as we are transitioning to all IP-based cameras. When the buildings were built, they had analog cameras, and as we all know, in this digital age, we're going to all IP-based. We have this year and next year left of the five-year PI, and Mr. Gordon's going to speak to you about it at the next board meeting, and we're a little bit ahead of schedule, and we'd like to, with your approval, move that 2020 budget up and try to get some of those cameras replaced. Part of that is also software. They all have Windows 7 in them, and for those that don't know, Windows 7 goes away at the end of 2019. So we're aggressively making sure we don't go down that, and I've been working with Mr. Gordon's group on that, and we're ahead of schedule in that game. Lighting, I want to talk to you a little bit about lighting, as Mr. Gordon and I, he's trying to, I'm not trying to spend money, it's just, security costs some money sometimes. We had a conversation early on this year, and I went and visited some of the high schools at night, and I said, hey, you know, the lights go out. He goes, oh yeah, we're saving $1,800 a year at the high school on this energy savings. So I said, oh yeah, can we get those turned back on? So there's some prevention that lighting plays, obviously, potential vandalism, and to work coincide with our cameras, should something happen, we need to be able to see in those parking lots. So a little bit of give and take there with facilities, but I just wanted you to know, I'm not trying to take away from the efficiency, but sometimes we have to strike a compromise. All right, the one thing I did that did not cost any money, I went through all the buildings, and based on the past 20 years of violence in schools, it was determined that, yeah, they have three options. You have to, you either can run, you can hide, and you can fight. The hide, if you will, option only works if they're inside their classroom, inside locked doors. Luckily, all our classrooms have locks on it, it would be insurmountable to have to replace them. They all have locks on the doors. I have instructed all the staff to teach with locked doors. There's not going to be enough time, if there's an incident, to go to the threat side or the hall side and go out and lock the door, and we've learned that from several past incidents. So the teacher's been advised to teach with the classroom doors locked, and like I said, that was a no-cost item for us. I also asked the staff to increase their visibility. We've implemented some strategies and procedures to increase visibility and safety during high-volume times, arrival, lunchtime, dismissal. That's the times where we're, have the most amount of students moving about. In between periods, I've asked the staff to come out into the hallways, to observe the hallways, to go into the bathrooms. I realize we have a lot of kids, I realize we have a lot of bathrooms, but the more eyes we can get out there, the better. In the summer, I'm working with the athletic directors and the principals to offer more special duty coverage during various other special events. We do a pretty good job of attracting special duty for football games, some basketball games, but I've attended some high-volume events like art shows, where we should probably look to see about getting some sort of a security coverage. Okay, more free stuff. Again, as a public servant my entire life, my first goal was to meet with all the public service agencies, the EMTs, the firefighters, and obviously, the police. Our SROs, as you know, are, come to us from the Delaware County Sheriff's Office, and we have a great working relationship with Sheriff Martin, I've known him for 12 years. He instituted a plan this year, not only the SROs, but the actual road deputies during the day shift are coming into a school, they're checking in with the principal, they're just walking through. So I expanded that to include Powell PD, Genoa Township PD, and I spoke with the Howie Patrol Post Commander. To include the fire and EMS chiefs, I asked for whenever they're coming back from a run, if they can pull through the parking lot. If they're doing a traffic accident report, I said, pull in off of Alamo Parkway, sit in our school. If we get calls from parents, that's okay, we'll explain to them why they're there, but the more presence we can get, that has a deterrent effect. Both county EMAs, as you know, one of our schools hits Franklin County. I established a reverse 911 contact for, if there's an incident in a geographical area at any of our schools, we will now get notified by either Delaware County or Franklin County EMA. That's an opt-in program, it's not like Amber Alert, where if, once you set up your phone, it's always there. So I just took the liberty of adding all the principals and their physical locations. So should an on-scene commander have an incident in their area, and they request EMA to do basically a reverse 911, or to call all the phones in that area, we will be notified ahead of time.
That was always a burden, as a building principal, parents would find out about things going on before, or as it used to play out, one of your children would find out about it, text one of you, and then you'd call me, and I didn't know anything about it. Now we're getting those calls, when there's a bank robbery, and we need to be in lockdown, or those kind of things.
Sure.
So that's very valuable.
Again, no cost. And working with our IT folks, we've increased our landline or our VoIP phones, so we have redundant notifications here. Whenever anyone places a 911 call at any of our buildings, it goes through to 911, and they handle their emergency. But on the back end, we're getting calls on our cellphones, emails, so we're notified. Now, most of them have been for medical purposes, but while the staff is busy handling that call, we want to make sure that they don't need any of our assistance, or if we don't hear from them, we're just going to respond. We've done some things with our radio system, we have a pretty robust walkie radio system, we have a repeater right over there at Shanahan School. When the superintendent and his crew of weather warriors go out during the wintertime, instead of calling each other or texting on the cellphones, we implemented an administrative channel. And so that serves a dual-fold for us. We're testing our radios all the time. From Johnny Cake to Tyler Run, we have constant communication in this district, we're very fortunate to do that. And Michelle Cox does a monthly radio test with each school secretary to make sure, should the phones go down, the cellphones go down, that we have that constant communication. Talk a little bit about cyber. Emily and I started an internal working group, just to shore up our internal cybersecurity here. We also have the Communications Director, the IT Director, the Human Resources Assistant Director, and we look at vulnerabilities to our system, mostly phishing and spam emails, and due to that, we've been able to strengthen our online posture, creating some multi-factor password protection. Another internal working group, we had, this is the Assistant Superintendent, Randy Wright, Communications Director, Assistant Director, IT Director, Systems Admin, and myself. This in conjunction with the Safe Schools Hotline, the 24/7 reporting posture. Whenever we receive any information on social media about a threat, we attended a training, and we have a few tools that we can try to ascertain whether or not that's a credible threat, or what we have to do. And one success story, I'll tell you, back in December, we received a threat via another school district of a Snapchat of an image of a gun, and it stated Liberty High School. The team was able to ascertain pretty quickly that that happened to be at Liberty High School in Missouri, so as the social media was spinning up here, we were able to put that fire out relatively quickly. Threat assessment teams. You may have heard this talked about in the news, this will eventually become at the forefront, so our whole goal here is to prevent any targeted act of violence. I looked at how we did it in the school district, and each school was doing it a little bit differently. So with that, we beta-tested some software, and coming up this school year, we're going to have a multidisciplinary approach, where we're going to be able to, each school is going to have their own team, and what we're going to be looking at is a, at the middle school and high school levels, members of the teams will be principals, counselors, coaches, teachers, SROs. It's just a rapport-building, gathering information, and we're going to be looking to evaluate students' behavior and communication in the context of his or her age, social and emotional development. It can be called an assessment and care team, it can be called a behavioral intervention team, but this is the national standard of how to try to prevent any incident from boiling up into a targeted act of violence. We can't predict, you know, anything, but this is our best bet to try to prevent. So we're going to establish the teams, we're going to define prohibited concerning behaviors. We already are in the process of creating this reporting system, and I want you to know, this'll all be sensitive, redacted information, this will not be public information. We're going to develop what the thresholds should be for the law enforcement or the SROs piece of it, they would only be involved if it was a threat of violence, or, you know, any planned school attack. Everything else, your suicide, your bullying, drugs, cutting, depression, that's going to all stay at the school-based level. Partner engagement. Like I said, I try to reach out to the other public and private entities, that doesn't cost any money. I'm a member of the Delaware County Criminal Justice Association, the Delaware County Fire Chiefs Association, I've presented to them. And this third one is something new, it's the Delaware County Public Private Recovery Committee. That looks at long-term recovery, functional plan, and then all hazards, emergency management. The next one down, the COSAN, or the Central Ohio Safety Administrators Network, I got together with Tom Goodney of the ESC, and people in our like positions meet quarterly, and it's all schools in central Ohio. We did, you know, we discuss best practices, and we speak about like the grant that we received, and what we're planning on spending that. Not only do I have meetings with our own school resource officers, but the Sheriff's Department has invited me to attend the county school resource officers' meetings, so I can see what Buckeye Valley and Big Walnut and the other schools in the area are doing. I presented to the County Superintendent's Committee, like I said before, I've spoken to some PTOs and the parent programs, team program. I'm almost done. See something, say something, it works. It really and truly does. I know it's cliche to say that. We've had successes where this works, but we individually recognize the students and tell their parents, we don't want them, you know, labeled. And I can give you a story, a high school student reported a social media post that he saw about a school threat, and it didn't even happen to be in Olentangie, and this was on a Sunday. He contacted the SRO. The SRO contacted me, we passed information along to the appropriate authorities, and this is what we heard back. "On behalf of the Police Department, I'd like to thank every concerned resident from not only our community, but through our country. When we have a threat against our students, we become united. We receive many calls and messages, which is what should happen when a threat of this magnitude is made." So we got to get away from, it can't happen here, and what I'd like us to do is say, we won't let it happen here. That's all I had for my formal presentation.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
I have a couple, too.
Please.
We'll go down the line. You guys start.
So I appreciate the numbers about the best safety vestibules and
Yes, sir.
The fact that we need 17 more. I guess what I'd like to, I know that there's been some talk about internally, about waiting for the next bond issue, I don't really think that that's, in my opinion... I don't really think that that's, in my opinion, personal opinion, that's viable. So I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Rafe and Emily and Kevin and Mindy to look at our current financial position and to see if we can, because I know that our cash flow is robust, fairly robust for us, despite what our friends at the State House tend to banter about. I guess I'd like you to take a look at whether or not we can put these vestibules into play next summer and get them all done. I think that's our high priority for us. I'm just one voice, but at least let's take a look at that financial impact and what that looks like.
Thank you.
Or any grants that would be available.
Anything we can do, but I think we need to get them into the position now that we shouldn't wait for the next bond issue to get those in place. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, and that ties into my second comment for you.
Sure.
Which, as you said a couple of times, it doesn't cost any money. I get that. I am not a supporter of cutting things to the bone, especially from a safety perspective. So I'd appreciate maybe if you could come back to the board or come back through Mr. Rafe at some point with what your list is, as opposed to what we have and what we get for free. If you could maybe come back with what you think we need.
Okay.
What you think it means to be, have a robust safety program. A lot of the things that you had are certainly public entity, public domain pieces, and there is a responsibility for all of us to do that.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. As a person who has to look at safety every day, and when I do, but I'd appreciate if you could put some thought as to what else you think makes us the safest place that we can be or have the safest places we can have for our kids and for our staff and for the community.
Yes, sir. I do have a list of tiering of what I think is
Thank you for saying that.
Tier one, two, three, and four.
And the priority.
I do. By priority, yes.
Right.
And that could be, you know, I
Actually, if you don't mind, I mean, I would say our next priority for the safety vestibules is at the high schools.
That's fine. However you want to rank them, but, you know, again, I don't, you know, we've seen that the safety issues that have happened at schools are not just at high schools.
Absolutely.
And there are targets at every level, and I don't want us to be
We just have a lot of different arrival and departure times at the high schools where at the other levels it's succinct. And that's my rationale for that.
Absolutely.
And we'll be ready to bring that list back. Part of it was in the thought process of planning for the next, as we were planning for the next bond issue, are there things we can accelerate if we choose to do that before the next bond issue? But, you know, even like bollards in front of entrances so that somebody can't drive a car up into one of our entrances. Those kind of things.
So I do have that as more of a longer term. I just didn't want to hit you guys up with
To Roger's point, those things should be included in the five-year capital plan.
Yes, sir.
Because we make those priority decisions every year, and if we have a different set of priorities than what's being reflected in the capital plan, we need to change the capital plan.
Agreed.
Because we spend money on this stuff every year, and I'll pick up my favorite, but a ton of money on asphalt. At the same time, we're falling behind on safety measures.
If our asphalt's bad, maybe the cars can't get through.
Well, what we should do is leave all the chuck holes right in front of the entrances.
Right.
I think parents would accept a couple rough parking lots if we're spending money on safety measures. Agreed.
So those are just my two points. So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I do work really well with Mr. Gordon. He's as much a safety proponent as I am, so we'll continue to have those discussions.
I had a question for you. Well, first of all, I just last week watched, I think it's We Are Columbine, and the students did a documentary on their perspective, which I thought was very well done because it wasn't exploited in any way. And I think it focused on five students, but two of them also said what you started off with this evening about they never walk into a place that they don't have an exit strategy for, which is
Anyone else do that?
I don't. I need to start.
I do that every place I go. I work in refineries. I do that every place I go. I know my access and egress.
I do agree with the safety vestibule request. I also, though, think that our mental health component is just as equal because when we're paying attention to the kids and we're noticing things and to see something, say something, that I think that keeps us extremely safe as well.
I can share with you a little bit on that. The current grant that we have, I'm working with Alicia, and we have allocated money specifically for mental health, and that's currently in the works.
That's great. Is that part of the threat assessment teams?
That will feed into it, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I also sent on the Delaware Area Career Center School Board, and I know that you've worked with them on their safety plan. And I did not realize this, they were briefing us on their safety plan because they're going to run their tests, you know, their simulations.
Their full-scale.
Yeah, and I did not realize that now they highly recommend, and the Career Center has it in place, I'm not going to say where it is, but you have to have a rendezvous point where the kids meet the teachers, and then you have to have a point where then the kids are reunited. So it's rendezvous
Reunification.
And then reunite with the parents. And for one building at the Career Center, that was easy to do, and they're partnering with our school district to come up with those locations, but are we going to do that here? Because that is like, that's, for one building, it was a huge thing to come up with, but for all of our buildings, to have two locations, how are we going to do that?
Yeah, we already have that. The first three weeks I got here, those safety plans include all that. We have it for each
Every building has a rendezvous, right?
Yeah, so you have a rendezvous to meet your teacher
It's called a rally point and a reunification point.
And then reunite. And then they also have, every teacher now at the Career Center has a grab-and-go pack where it's a backpack that has things like tourniquets in it. And they have a neon hat so that the students know that that is a safe person to go to because in the chaos, the shooter might be looking like them or looking like a teacher. And so they have all these supplies in their grab-and-go bags, and the teachers grab them and go to where they're supposed to go. So that's something else we might, I mean, for 2,000 employees, it might be expensive, but they've done it at the Career Center.
So each SRO has a comprehensive bag with them. I realized there's only six SROs. The sheriff's department spent about $9,000 on those bags. We still have some budget money left over from this grant, and we have had one of our parents who's also, he's an emergency room doctor, and he's actually now the, I think it's the Assistant Medical Director for Liberty Township. He came in and did a stop-the-bleed training for us, and he has a discounted rate for some further kits. He was on vacation this past week, so he and I are getting together next week to utilize some of the grant money to purchase those items. But thank you.
So, and then my final question is, are we going to, the Career Center is going to run a simulation of, you know, getting out of the building, going to the rendezvous, and then going to the reunite place? And are we going to be able to do that? I think you said that we are, but with every building?
So we are able to consolidate for the exercise purposes. I am able to consolidate it from one building to the next, but I'm bringing all the administrators into that scenario, so it doesn't matter what school.
Right.
The process is still going to be the same. But yeah, I am working with the Career Center on that, and I have offered our transportation and a building should the need arise.
I got three things. Compliment and then two comments.
Yes.
Number one, I'm very impressed
Thank you, sir.
with what you and your team has done. And in particular, I appreciate your extremely comprehensive book on it.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. Two things. I recently just finished a fascinating book. When I get home, I'm going to have to look and just make sure you didn't write it. But this woman wrote this book about dealing with these severe disaster and emergency conditions. And when you mentioned, it made me think of this, when you mentioned you always look when you come into a room where the exits are. Well, one of the points that she was making, and in her case, this was about fire exit and high rises, is that you need, the employees, they need to, on a regular basis with team leaders, and you talk about rally points, it's included in that, I don't know what she called it, but you have to go down those stairs and know where they go. And I'm going to see my son on Sunday, he works on the 22nd floor downtown, and I'm going to ask him, "Have you ever walked down that stairway?"
Yeah, you need to build that muscle memory.
Yes, exactly. And she speaks to that over and over again. It's a fascinating book. I'm going to snapshot the cover and I'll send it to everybody. And you probably have read it. I wish I could think of the title of it. Just fascinating. The third thing is, my wife, a couple months ago, in one of her industry seminars, conferences, the speaker was a lady, I can't remember her rank, doesn't matter, with Columbus PD. And she was talking about this other acronym, similar to ALIS, but I think it was just
Alert?
It might have been A-L-E-R-T. I was thinking it was just three letters, but a similar program.
Sure.
And she gave me all of her notes, and I'm going to send all those notes to everybody so you can read them for yourself and including yourself, of course. But it was really interesting. She, in her case, she was talking about these kinds of situations where a shooter, an active shooter comes into a building and the kinds of things that you should be prepared for and do.
Yeah, there's a YouTube video called Run Height Fight, and it's done very well.
That might have been it.
That's it, yes, sir.
I bet that was it. I'll send that.
I could send that out if you'd like through Mr. Rafe.
Anything else?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, the next agenda item is a board president's report. I only have two things, one I'll take, and then two, the second one I'll ask Julie to help out on. First one is, I want to make sure everyone's aware that this Saturday at 10:00 AM, we'll be holding a memorial service for Robert Bell at Liberty High School. So for those who don't know, Robert was a longtime custodian at Liberty High School, passed away several months ago. He was also president of the Custodial Union. So I would encourage those who knew Robert to attend. I know I will be there in attendance for the board. So, and I appreciate Mr. Starmer pulling that together. For that, I asked Julie to give us a few comments on the political landscape around school funding. I know
Yes, I'm going to
Ms. Hatfield's going to go through some numbers.
Yes, I'm going to do political, she's going to do numbers.
Yes, so let's divide and conquer.
Yes. For all of you that are in the room, if you could pass this along, state school funding comes from the general fund. We all pay into the general fund through our sales and income tax that we pay. And there are some state fees that go into that as well, but it's mostly your sales and your income tax. Your property taxes stay here, and we greatly appreciate that. So we get to keep our property taxes, except when they go to community schools, which is another topic. That general fund is then divided up among a lot of things, including school funding. Emily, it was great to get back to me very quickly. We get six cents on the dollar back. For every dollar we pay in sales and income tax, we get six cents back on the dollar. The average school district gets about 40 cents back on the dollar. So that means that we're a donor school district. Our sales and income tax is going to other school districts in the state. That's how school funding works. Now, we have only advocated at the state level for fairness in funding. And our state senator, Andy Brenner, understands that, and our state rep, Rick Carfania, understands that, and they've been advocating for us at the State House. Unfortunately, it's fallen onto deaf ears by the people who control the process of the bills at the State House. And so there is a plan out there that would fix school funding, not just for Olentangie. And actually, Olentangie, it wouldn't be a windfall for us, but it would at least be a fix for school funding that would work for 85% of the school districts in the state. The other 15% of the school districts in the state, they wouldn't lose money, they would just be kept at a level of fund. They would be funded at a level that they're currently being funded at. And the reason they wouldn't get additional funding is because they're losing student population. It makes sense. They always preach that the funding should go where the pupil is, and so where the pupils are. So the funding would go where the pupils are. It would go to Licking Heights, which is growing, and it would go to Olentangie, who's growing. It would go to Whitehall, who's now seeing some increase in student population. But unfortunately, at the state level, those who control everything, and it's just a couple people, are not letting that bill go through. It's the Cup Patterson Plan, and it's not happening. And so what you have is, the Senate released their version of the budget on Monday at 1:00 PM. There's not a fix to the school funding formula. It's another Band-Aid on a wound that is growing. Emily's going to go over the numbers and tell you how much money we're going to get. Don't worry, it's not going to put off the next levy ask by any means. But it's just incredibly frustrating that ever since the last budget was signed, we started working on educating people again. And we have been advocating at the State House since Dr. Lucas was here. And this past, this past two years, Mr. Rafe has done more in advocacy efforts than we've ever done before, and yet it's not getting fixed. And so if any of you in the audience have good friends at the State House, and it's not Representative Brenner and Carfania, they're already good friends, but leadership, especially in the House, they're not getting it. And it's just incredibly disheartening for all of us here to have to go through this because we know that it's not fair, not just for Olentangie, but for 85% of the school districts in the state. And they're not stepping up and they're not fixing school funding when a fix can be put into place. So
Not to get ahead of Emily, but if we get funded at the formula, it's 55 million, we get capped and we get 11. So we get $44 million of funding taken away to the caps that they refuse to address.
Which is a 10 mil levy.
Yeah, it's a 10 mil, yeah.
And the frustrating thing is, so they're bragging about a tax cut again, the 8% tax or whatever it is. It's pennies on the, for all the residents of Ohio, it's pennies on the dollar. But the biggest, but us passing another levy is, or not having to pass another levy, is true tax relief.
Yeah.
And if that, from an economic development standpoint, makes all of our dirt more attractive from an economic development standpoint. That then creates jobs and produces income tax and so on and so on and so on.
So when we get, when we don't get state funding because of our growth and just to keep up with, you know, our day-to-day expenses, we have to go back to the residents in our community. And we do not spend the state's average. We spend below the state's average. So we don't have a spending problem. It's a revenue problem that leaders at the House particularly refuse to fix. And so I'm completely frustrated because I felt really good going into this budget debate, just because of the one-on-one conversations we've been having. And it's not just with our legislators. Mr. Rafe and others have gone out to talk to, you know, Senator Matt Dolan, it's in the Cleveland area. You know, they've met with Democrats that we can partner with. Not to say that we would not partner with Democrats, but we, you know, we're working with school districts
Vice-partisan effort.
Yeah, that we've never worked with before. Emily testified with Whitehall, Licking Heights, and Bickerington, which were, you know, we don't have a lot in common very often, and we do on this issue.
Right.
And so we have done everything, everything. And unfortunately, the egos at the House are not letting the Cup Patterson Plan go into effect.
And that summed it up in a nutshell.
Yeah, I have more numbers for you, but very much the frustration that we're feeling is the lack of support and the overall carry forward for the plans or for adjusting the funding. So I'll get in more of the details when we get to that, when we get to the treasurer's report. But yeah, the situation is, it did look promising for a while, and then, like you said, it took a turn for the worse, and what's in place right now is not significant enough to move the needle on our forecast at all, even though it's in the news as robbing the poor to help the rich.
How many days would that be? One and a half days of operations?
Well, in looking at the million that they have in the state budget at our $11,000 per pupil, it's about 100 kids. We expect our ADM to grow by over 400 kids. And it's 100 kids if they would fully fund them at the $11,000, which they don't. They give us about $600 a student. So it's, I'm appreciative of what we do get, but it's not enough to make any kind of significant effort to our financial situation.
And because we've been underfunded for years, and this is going back to like, as far back as the state has kept the information, I could go back to like 1990, we have been underfunded that entire time. So to catch us up, we realize it would be a windfall. We're not even expecting to be caught up. We're just expected to be fairly funded.
For those of you in the audience that wonder why we talk about this so much, it's because we want to continue to demonstrate that we take every effort, every avenue prior to getting on the ballot for a levy, whether it's lobbying, being diligent with expenses, trying to stretch things before we go back to the taxpayer. We've been close on the revenue side twice now, and we'll continue our efforts in that vein. So, thank you, Julie. Mark, are you ready for the, Mr. Rafe?
Everybody knows it first name, just like when my students used to call me by it first name. All right. Boy, am I Boy, am I, I am definitely challenged with this clicker. It's like every time. All right, I got you. All right. You gotta be smarter than the clicker, that's all there is to it. So, as always, I'd like to start off with the, you know, the good things that are happening around the district that demonstrate us living our mission. We held our annual think tank. I'm gonna give big compliments to the curriculum team for planning this annual event. It, we had over three hundred teachers in attendance, keynote speakers. OEF actually sponsored our keynote speaker this year, so we're proud of that partnership. It really sets the stage for our summer work and gets our teachers geared up to start planning for, for next year. You know, the theme is always about igniting innovative thinking amongst our staff. So, great job by our curriculum team to plan that event. The preliminary results are out from the spring tests and results look strong again. We met twenty of the twenty-one academic indicators, missed eighth grade math again. We're inching closer, seventy, almost seventy-nine percent. It is actually nine students. We needed nine students. Ms. Dr. Fettie and I actually looked at all of the passing scores and compared the passing scores, or the scores, Limited, Basic, Proficient, Accelerated and Advanced, to all of the classroom letter grades to find, and we actually have a very strong correlation between the letter grades our kids earn in their classes and their predictability towards passing. Although we did find a number, enough students to, we think, develop an additional strategy to target for additional support to pass because we had kids who got As in their eighth grade math classroom that didn't pass the test. So, we're gonna target some of those kids next year because we needed eight more to pass to have hit the indicator.
Isn't this an area we've been challenged?
It is, and essentially, and a lot of it has to do with when you accelerate. Again, fifty percent of our eighth graders take algebra. So that, if those fifty percent of the kids took the eighth grade math, more than likely we'd make that indicator. A lot of districts, some districts who don't hit the seventh grade indicator are doing something in the seventh grade with their curriculum alignment that is, essentially have to decide the year you're gonna take to hit. I also bless you, I also think, you know, again, we, there are things we can do to hit this, hit this indicator. I'm not, especially after I've just looked at those numbers, I'm not willing to say it's just because fifty percent of our eighth graders are taking algebra. Twenty, out of twenty-one, I'm, obviously we're not twenty-one, but I will say comparatively amongst all the suburban districts, I have not seen the results from Bexley, Granville, Grandview, yet. Those are three that are typically right in there with us. We met twenty, I know Upper Ellington met twenty, and New Albany met nineteen, but a lot of the other ones weren't close to that. So, again, we don't compare ourselves in those ways, but we're doing well. Our PI, we're working on the preliminary PI, it's gonna be, looks like it's slightly up. Advanced and accelerated percentages are strong, as the slide says, over fifty percent of the students are advanced or accelerated. So, again, I'm proud of the results, so. Oh, sorry, I had a slide prepared from a week ago with Emily testifying about school funding, but, you know, I was gonna talk and give a lot of kudos to that and then the Senate released their budget, so we've talked enough about that. Sorry. Great picture, though, Emily.
Emily did a fine job. Thank you, but not so much.
So, every year our bands participate in the Memorial Day Parade, so this year Liberty and Olentangie Berlin had their marching bands participate in the parade. It's always a great community engagement event. I'm sure we'll have the Orange Band, that makes the Orange Township Parade extra long when the Orange Band performs. It's three hundred strong, so. And highlighting our action items, you have a member, one of your board action items is to approve a memorandum of understanding, amending Appendix D of our OTA contract, and that is a supplemental salary schedule. And we've broken the supplemental salary schedule out into academic and athletic components. As part of our last negotiations with OTA, we put in there a commitment to form a committee, a joint committee, to study this issue. And I wanna compliment the work of Elaine Eddy, OTA president, who's here tonight, and Nancy Freeze, because they led the committee. We had administrators on it, Mr. Betts was instrumental in that, we had other teachers on the committee, and they really dug in and looked at where all of our supplementals were. And every year in negotiations, OTA brings changing the supplemental salary schedule and we bring back, we don't want to change the supplemental salary schedule, and that is always the first chip that's kicked down the road. So we finally made a commitment to really looking at it and fixing it. We believe we've got better alignment with the groups, we've moved some of the positions up in the groups, some of the positions down in the groups. But we believe that the schedule makes sense and it puts our supplemental salary schedule into a range deserving of the work that all of those coaches and advisors do. So, recommending approval of that item. Passed OTA by ninety-nine percent, I believe, is that what you said? Yeah, very, very high. Again, I just, again, I feel really proud because it is literally something that needed to be addressed for probably the last twenty years. And we just kept kinda kicking the can down the road, so. And we have budgeted for that. It is reflective in our May five-year forecast, so. One item on the agenda is retirement of Kim Tantari from Allen Creek Elementary. Mrs. Tantari's been in the district for a long time, over twenty-five years, I believe. She's, she's been at Allen Creek, so sad to see her go. We have three administrative employments on the agenda. Stephen Peters, who was previously the assistant principal at Glen Oak, has been selected to be the principal to replace Jacqueline Roscoe. Mr. Ben Jagger from, is being recommended to be the additional assistant at Berlin High School, and he's in the crowd. Will you? Mr. Jagger?
I was gonna say, it wouldn't be like Mr. Spinner did not have you attend.
Exactly.
I'm just surprised he's wearing orange.
You didn't get that memo.
Just so, you know, that's how we roll. We're gonna call you out, we're gonna call you out in public, it's all right. And Ms. Chaitel Taylor, a school social worker, is also in for administrative approval, so. And then with that, just the next three board meetings, June twenty-seventh reminder, we are at Olentangie. The final student recognition from spring sports, and then we have our Monday, July eighth board meeting, and then our August eighth.
Wait, is that gonna be at the Currier Center? We're supposed to do a field trip to the Currier Center for a board meeting?
Um, I, give me a date.
It's coming.
Yeah.
We can do it, I can start with Mary Beth Freeman, if we can do it August eighth.
Yeah.
Or in the fall, or September.
Yeah.
The other thing, on the schedule, for the board, twenty-seventh, and the eights will likely be long meetings, we'll have hearings.
Okay. And I will not be here.
And you've already let us know.
The twenty-seventh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hatfield, the treasurer's report.
I apologize, I do not have a PowerPoint, but I did want to address the group from the podium, as we have lots of information, not only regarding the state budget, but some other items that are going on in our department. I'll start with the state budget update, just to finish up that conversation before we move forward. But with the Senate's release, the anticipated revenue would be about one point one million for fiscal year twenty and one point six or seven million dollars for fiscal year twenty-one. When we looked at the executive summary, the governor's proposal had about six hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty and seven hundred thousand additional in those wraparound services for the following year. Those services, we know that we are already taking action on. Our district has been very supportive of social and emotional well-being supports. As you'll hear in a moment, some more information about that from Alicia and her team. But we continue to support those activities without the specific state funding for that. The million dollars that they are proposing from the Senate, again, a million dollars to a two hundred and thirty-one million dollar budget is not significant. It's not gonna move the needle. We will continue to be a locally funded district that heavily relies on local tax dollars and has to continue to talk to our community about levies. As Mr. Rafe stated, we did go back to the State House and testify in front of the Senate Finance Committee with our partners at Licking Heights and Whitehall and also Pickerington to show the committee that these are very three different dynamic, dynamically different schools, but all suffer from the same caps. It affects us in different ways, but we are affected by these false caps that are put into place, which keep us from gaining the growth funding that we deserve just by student count. Not just talking about dollar that we, per student that we receive, but not receiving enough for each and every student that we get. So it's really disheartening to see the Senate plan come out without that funding because the Fair School Funding Plan even went back to work and made changes to their funding plan to address the issues that the Senate said they had with not serving underprivileged students enough. So even with those adjustments, they've set it aside and are still not funding the district fairly, as well as other districts. So, you know, we'll continue to have conversations and watch and monitor what's going on. That will come out of the Senate Committee and then have to go to the governor for signature into law by June thirtieth. So it's getting close to the end of that cycle. So more to come on that as it becomes officially done. And other things that we have going on, we just wanted to let you know, a couple of items that we're working on in the department. We are coming close to our fiscal year end. We will close our books as of June thirtieth, so we have just a couple of days left and we're trying to make sure we've got everything in and calculated appropriately to close. We still feel that we'll be on target or close to target to where we were with the May forecast, so that's a good thing. We also have a candidate on the superintendent action items. We have Ms. Jennifer Glorioso, who will be filling in as a treasurer's associate, primarily working with our fixed assets, but also with posting receipts and other items within the department. So we're excited to have her with us. She will be joining us from having some time at home with her children, but primarily has a background with working with Chase Bank. And then the other two items that we have, that are financial items coming before the board for discussion and one for approval vote, is the Northgate TIF and NCA project, which was presented to you at the last meeting. We have Tommy Hatfield and Pat Shively here to make sure that you don't have any other questions. They'll go through the highlights of the project and then ask for official approval of that this evening. And then we also have the Kroger Company Expansion Project. This is a project that we have not brought to the board as of yet. But this project is really about partnering with a local commercial property in the area and what we can do to help them expand and sustain their locale here in Delaware County and to grow their overall support in their organization at large. So we'll have Sean and I believe, Tom, thank you, I couldn't see you, you're on the floor, I apologize. So they will give a presentation about what that entails and what that proposal looks like, and that will come back to the board for approval at our next meeting. And then with that, we just have regular board meeting minutes for the approval on the agenda tonight as treasurer action items, and those are just our standard minutes that we bring forward to be in compliance with Ohio Revised Code. Are there any questions that you have about those items?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is the public participation session. Do we have a public participation?
Yes, we do have one item for public participation, please. We have Elizabeth Hickson, who would like to speak about eliminating Native racist mascots. And I'm going to read you part of the policy that addresses public participation, please. We want to have you state your name and address for the record, if you would, please. Any group affiliation, if you have one. And then a gentle reminder that public participation is limited to five minutes. So once we, if you get close to that mark, I might interrupt you to let you know that your five minutes has passed, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So like she said, my name is Elizabeth Hickson. When I passed through Olentangie Schools, my last name was Elizabeth Castro. Currently, I live in Franklinton, one ninety-six South Giff Street, which is kinda weird to say out loud, I feel like that's like, but, okay. So I'm here to speak on the elimination of using race-based mascots. It's an interesting thing to note because I am a person of color, that there is not a single person of color on this board. And that is also interesting to notice that there is a grant from a financial board without a single person of color and without a single woman. And that is something I notice everywhere I go. I can't help but notice it. As somebody who suffers from imposter syndrome, a lot of colored folk do. And being in a very white majority school, a lot of colored students do. And we're not really educated on what that is and how that contributes to our self-esteem and our, on our academic performance and even on our character. And so, all those things kinda wrap into why I'm coming to you today and what I have done after I've graduated. I graduated with Mr. Ranky's youngest son, and I believe your son too, if your son's name's Brad, Michael.
No.
Okay, sorry.
My kids are still in school, but that's okay.
I just noticed the Hatfield, but, okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, I am not with any group, I am just as individual. I first wanted to do a land recognition because of the, like, almost the complete invisibility of the Native groups that are still a part of this land, but were removed a long time ago. Their ancestors are still buried here and even with their, the tribal names in our schools and those mascots and those figureheads we use to kinda honor them, it doesn't do enough. So, we are on the land where the Delaware Nation, the Shawnee, the Miami, then the Lenape had been living for thousands of years before this district was here. Like I said, I graduated from Olentangie Liberty in twenty fifteen and I went to Olentangie Liberty Middle School as well. They had the Warriors as their mascot. And specifically, they had Wuzzy the Warrior. I grew up in the district and I was interested in being the mascot at Liberty, wanting to act a fool and just have fun. And it was in innocence, however, leaving and going to Standing Rock in twenty sixteen and meeting Indigenous people and then furthering my education and what actually happened and the things that I didn't learn about our colonial history in this school district, I was totally appalled. And I realized that what I had done is extremely racist. I personally did not do any gestures to mock the culture, because I didn't really pick up on that. However, I know a lot of students do, especially at pep rallies. Having Braves and Warriors creates an image in people's minds and it's a stereotype that they take out into the world. Not having the figurehead anymore doesn't do enough. It doesn't do enough because the stereotype and the story, the Hollywood version of what these kids are learning is still there. And it doesn't eliminate the fact that most of these kids are of settler descent. And they're not gonna probably come in contact with an Indigenous person unless they go way out of their way. And that contributes to things like pipelines. Where these kids grow up, they get... Where these kids grow up, they get these high-positioned jobs because they live in a wealthy district, they got set up by their parents, and then they're thinking that, oh, well, to make money and to be a capitalist, doesn't matter if I don't listen to these treaties that, that happened, what, 200 years ago? But it does matter, especially in this political climate when our President is mocking the same Indigenous people, mocking people with disabilities, mocking people of color. Indigenous people are being ripped apart from their families at the border. It's an issue that starts in our schools if we are actually going to address racism and white-
Ms. Hickson, I'm sorry, you have one minute.
And white superiority, white nationalism. It's not like we are protecting and securing our schools from people of color. People who are making attacks against schools are mostly white nationalists, and that's a fact. So we need to address that. And also, I had a few comments on the presentations. I really hope that we're addressing the sources of problems, not just treating symptoms. So instead of pushing more police into schools and making 911 the first, the first phone call that we address to solve a problem, we really need to start opening up better dialogue and communication so that we can address what is going on in the kids' hearts and what's happening at home and what they're picking up in society because there's a lot of built-up tension. And that is how white nationalists are created.
Ms. Hickson, I apologize, but that was five minutes.
Thank you, I'm glad I got that out.
That's that, okay.
What'd you say?
Unless we want to extend the time, but we are at our five minutes.
You've got 30 more seconds, we can wrap it up.
All right. Also, I noticed that in the security and safety presentation, there wasn't any, there wasn't any address to any mental health support, and that is a big issue. Personally, I had an incident in high school because I was a trouble kid, trouble color kid, and I didn't need police intervention. I needed support. I needed someone to realize I was having a mental breakdown, not to be tackled and put in a hospital and forced to give a pee test and chained and have a police officer standing at the foot of my bed with my, with my legs tied to the bed so he could just stare straight into my, my hospital gown, all right? 911 is not the people to call. That's my final thing.
Just for the record, our next agenda item is a proposal from Ohio State on mental health.
Cool. Excited to hear about that.
Well, it was mentioned in Mr. Joe's presentation about the wraparound services and part of his approach with the safety is also the mental health side, so that was indeed mentioned before. So with all due respect to you thinking it wasn't, it was, so.
Wasn't specific enough. And I'm saying 911 isn't the person to call.
Appreciate that.
You can, um-
Thank you.
You cannot dismiss me.
I'm not dismissing you, I'm just telling you what was said, so I appreciate your comments too, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
You're welcome.
All right, we are on to discussion items. The first item is the North Gate TIF, as Ms. Hatfield mentioned. So Mr. Shively and Mayor Hatfield were here at our last meeting with a detailed overview of the TIF. All we, this discussion is for questions, do we have any questions for the gentleman?
Unless anything's changed.
Do you want to add some comments?
No, just thank you again for having us here this evening, and it's great sitting here with the county and what's taking place, and just made me think of, there's a lot of positive, you know, there's a lot of negative in the world, but living in a county and a place where organization like, like the school board and the county and the village can come together and solve some problems, there's a good problems to have. But anything you'd like, any questions, I'd be more than happy to go back over presentation or-
Pretty well understood, the Board.
Right, I think your presentation was pretty comprehensive.
And I just wanted to point out that, you know, a lot of times, TIFs get a bad rap, but in, in the instances that we have had the last several months, it, they are, have all been positive for our school district because the amount of poverty taxes that we're currently getting on the land is not as much as we will get once this is enacted. So we are approving positive, positive-
Incremental revenue growth.
Yes, for our school district, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second discussion item is the Ohio State Mental Health Proposal. Alicia Berens, Amanda Lucas, and Matt Onorato, did I say that correctly?
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you so much for having me in front of you again. I always appreciate coming and speaking to you about the non-academic barriers that we address here and mental health support. I am finishing up my third year here as the Supervisor of Student Well-being, and so I just want to generally say that I am so proud of how far we've come from when I started to where we are now in supporting our non-academic barriers and mental health in our schools. And so I'm very excited to discuss this partnership, its continued partnership with OSU, however, just in a different entity. So I would like to introduce you to Amanda Lucas, the Executive Director of the OSU Neurological Institute at Harding Hospital, and Matt Onorato, the Director of Social Work at Harding Hospital, and they're going to speak to you more about their services.
Thank you very much. Good evening, welcome and thank you for having us. We'll try to keep this brief because I understand everyone's read the RFP, but I want to provide some background. So Y Ohio State, we're the only academic medical center in central Ohio, and we want to make sure your students have the top-notch services provided in your district. We're ranked by U.S. News &amp; Row Report as one of the top hospitals in central Ohio. The Department of Psychiatry at Ohio State is part of the Neurological Institute, and our neurology and neurosurgery services work close to or rank 22nd. And we house not only a Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Health and a hospital, but we also have an Institute for Behavioral Medicine where research is happening every day to understand what are the underlying causes of suicide, what helps folks in the best treatments in depression, and there's a lot of translation from bench-to-bed side of those practices. So we're really informing the science that helps provide the interventions. Our mission and vision is to improve health in Ohio and across the world. We want to push the boundaries and continue to discover knowledge, so we're going to come here with the latest interventions that we can offer your students. Mental health, I really applaud this district for realizing the problem of mental health in society. We know that 20% of the population's affected by mental health disorders, and yet only 41% receive treatment, so certainly your proposal opens the doors to access in ways that the district is very fortunate to be able to provide to students. 50% of students receive, experience some onset of symptomology by age 14 and 75% by age 24, so a lot of what happens in the early years informs how that manifests itself for adults. 8% of the population's affected by drug and alcohol use. You probably know that we have a very large opioid crisis, and the deaths in this state are only second to West Virginia, which has a worse rate than ours, so just very sad and a very big public health matter. I know near and dear to the district's heart is the increase in the suicide rate, not only nationally, that we've seen a 24% increase from 36% in Ohio between 1999 and 2014. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in those ages 10 to 34-years-old, and depression's the leading cause of disability. So really, you're really choosing to intervene with your students in an age where we can hope to help, and we hope that we can provide services that are the top-notch. We have a full range of services at Ohio State. We have emergency evaluation and crisis stabilization. Matt's team actually provides all the social work support to our patients who present in crisis at Ohio State. We have an emergency response team that goes throughout the medical center and helps promote addressing behavioral health issues in patients who are in med surg beds or other ICU capacities. We have acute inpatient psychiatry, we have 91 total beds, we have 20 adolescent beds. You can see a list of services there. The one thing I really want to highlight here is we have some cutting-edge programs around early onset psychosis that would inform our care. We also have a stress-trauma and resilient program and a trauma recovery center focusing on trauma. So part of what we recognize is that not only are there behavioral health issues, but there are events that occur in some of your students' lives that really trigger some of these issues. And so we want to look at what happens, what's happening to them, not just what's happening, how they're displaying that behavior. We do have child and adolescent programs, both at Ohio State and in partnership with Nationwide Children's. All of the faculty at Nationwide Children's are in fact faculty at Ohio State. We have a teen intensive outpatient program that runs. That's if, for those of you that are not familiar, we have programming that runs three days a week, three hours a day for our more intensive patients. We have an adolescent inpatient population that I spoke about previously. We have those crisis sub-urgency services, and coming soon, we hope to have this partnership with you. In supporting Olentangie Schools, we'll bring a preeminent model, really looking at behavioral health care, not only while the students are here, but if they needed services beyond that, we'd have a connection for that. We'll also be able to deliver training to the students and also to your faculty, and looking at research, and our team care is really interdisciplinary. We want to make sure we work not only among the folks that are in sort of our culture of social work and working with great folks like Alicia, but we want to also make sure we're partnering with the school district, with other care providers as needed. And of course, central to the mission would be how do we collaborate with family, these are students, they're in a school setting, and also with the school district. And that's our presentation, we'll take any questions you have.
Questions? I just have a question for Alicia. How are you sharing this information with our parents and students, and how are we keeping them aware of the services that are available? Are we doing that through the internal channels, are we doing it through newsletters, or how are you contacting, letting folks know it's there?
So once, um, once the things are finalized and once OSU is moved into place, they're going to be housed at the high school level, and we're shifting Centero down to K8, so we'll be able to access more schools. OSU is going to provide us with materials and brochures, information that we can share. Obviously, all of our administrations, school counselors, school social workers are aware of the partnerships and the referral process of how to refer students to the OSU clinicians within the building, and then working with Krista in Communications and how we can get that out with the new partnership through the newsletters and communication. There's certainly be different ways that we're going to do that.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know that, I know some people that have been at Harding Hospital, speak very, very highly of it. I didn't know there were only 20 beds. I would think that those are always full, but true?
We've got around about 80% occupancy, so-
So if we have students that were in that facility, would there be, would there be a communication between the facility and OSU person on-site at the high school?
Yes, that would be the goal with proper, you know, consent of release of information from the family. We would have that communication and collaboration. I think that's what's an exciting component is that I think this is really going to, not only are we going to enhance an outpatient treatment, but also be able to really collaborate because it takes a village, it takes all of us to help people with struggle in mental health with the students. So we're really excited about the opportunity, really impressed with Alicia and the work she's done and your generosity and mindfulness of the struggle.
So regardless of whether parents have the ability to pay through insurance, the kids will have access to the services regardless, right?
I personally hope that it just helps take the stigma out of talking to somebody away with somebody being in the school and an accessible adult that is, you know, someone on the cool factor.
Well, that's, as we've tried to, you know, Jack built, Alicia built a request or proposal for this, for this service, and what we looked at is, you know, how to fund that, and obviously, as indicated to you, we're using our federal restoration funds here initially, but as a district recognizing a commitment or a need, a high need in this area, the, we felt it was so important to have a dedicated staff person who was part of, seen by the students and the staff in our high schools as a staff person, and even though they'll be an OSU employee, and it's, we felt it's better to have that rather than them being ours because of all the factors that go into liability and, you know, all those different varying factors. But that, it will open up those conversations, and people will be more comfortable talking about mental health and the accessibility, but at the end of the day, then the accessibility for our kids to Harding Hospital if need be, or the intensive outpatient services, and then professional development for our staff, and, you know, we certainly had a very, very successful partnership with, with Ohio State through the, with the sports performance and athletic training, and this just seemed like a natural extension of that partnership.
Well, I'm excited because I know this has been, you've wanted this, you've had a vision starting four years ago when you hired Alicia for, for this to eventually happen, so I'm excited.
I have three questions. And is this in addition to our current services? Because I want to make sure that nothing is being eliminated.
Right. So this will be in addition, Centero will move K8, so we'll be able to hit more of the middle schools and elementary schools with their services, focusing a lot on prevention services at the younger ages, we want to be doing more prevention, older ages, we'll be doing more intervention. And then that would, the exception would be Oasis, we're going to keep the full-time Centero person at Oasis, that's very high-need population. So it would not be replacing any services, this would be in addition to, so we'd really be keeping up our mental health services, that's very exciting.
Great. And in the, in the contract, it gives like a model, a proposed model program would be to provide six to eight sessions for free, and this is talking about counseling sessions. And so it says onsite services for all students referred to by the current guidance counselor or social worker, but where would those counseling sessions take place? Where would they be held?
They're going to be housed in the building, so we are currently looking at space in the buildings to find a full-time office for those clinicians. So all of the administrators are working on that now, so that we will have a dedicated office to that clinician where they can house their resources and be privately with those students.
Okay, that was my concern, was the privacy. And then finally, does that type of counseling include drug counseling?
Yes, it can. Depending on the level of severity of addiction, obviously, they might need to go see a specialist. Our clinicians may not necessarily be drug and alcohol specialists specifically, but a lot of times, we know substance abuse and mental health play hand in hand. There's a lot of self-medicating going on, so if it's more of a mental health issue with some drug and alcohol attached to it, then we most likely will be able to address it in the school setting. If it's a higher level needing any kind of detox or anything like that, that obviously we need to go elsewhere for a, outside of the room.
And we'll be doing a very comprehensive diagnostic assessment, first contact to really try to tease out all the variables that are going on and how to best treat the student.
Okay, and then, I guess I had four questions. My final question was, and I understand that, you know, students can be referred to by their guidance counselor, but is there any other way that you can say, hey, this student really, that there's something going on here that they need additional services? You know, whether it's a classroom teacher, or how do you identify, how, has that-
Yeah, so we're working on strengthening our process for the referrals, whether that be through the RTI MTSS model for academics and social-emotional difficulties. So if a teacher's having a concern about a student at the building level, they can bring it to their RTI or their student success team or IAT team or whatever the college is calling it, to discuss what services would be most appropriate for that student, whether be academic or social-emotional. And then we'll have a step process of whether that student can be just integrated into a bunch of the elementary setting to see if that's appropriate intervention, or if it's something that the social worker needs to be doing ongoing sessions with them, or if it's at the level where we need a full diagnostic and intervention treatment of a specific mental health disorder in which they would then get referred on to that mental health specialist position. So we're working on shoring up that process, but I say over the last couple of years, we've really gotten better about that with teachers, and maybe just going in, educating the teachers on what to look for, what do you do if you're seeing things concerning about a student, and then who to go to. That itself has increased significantly where we're getting the teachers more comfortable in being able to spot those things and then take it to the counselor, take it to an administrator and say, hey, I'm worried about this kid, they're starting to withdraw, what do we need to do for them, and getting them looked up that way.
Great.
I recall last year, did you say that you do professional, you're providing professional development services to the staff on that, right? So, okay. So that's going to continue on and-
Absolutely. And OSU has agreed to continue that as well, so we will now, I'm only one person, so I can only do so much.
Yeah, I understand.
I try to do as much as I can, I actually love doing professional development, so that's good. But having OSU help with that, as well as Centero helping with professional development, we just are getting lots more entities to be able to provide that to our staff so that we're just getting it at lots of different avenues.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just want to thank the Board and Mr. Rafe for continuing- I just want to thank the board and Mr. Rafe for continued support in this area, because I know when I first started, we had a vision, and I can, I just appreciate the support that we get, that every time I come and speak to you, that we're very excited about helping our students in this way. I very appreciate it.
I know our parents are as well.
Yeah.
The parent format, or parent program that you led on stress and how to read your student's stress and how we as parents kind of feed into that for them. I know, that was an eye-opener for me as well.
I think it was more for us than the kid.
But I think those are so important, you know, it's not, it's the outside effect and how we can all help from all aspects of it. So, I think that that's important too, that you are working with our parents and our students and trying to talk to the community at large about this is really important too. So, thank you for that as well.
I see it as a three-pronged approach, where what are we doing to support our students? What are we doing to help our staff understand it? And then, what are we doing in the community for our parents? Because it's happening at all levels, similar to how Joe said, it takes everyone. We have to make sure that everyone is knowledgeable and aware and knows what to do when these things happen.
All right, thank you very much. We'll be voting on that later. Next discussion item is item C, the Kroger Company Expansion Project. Sean Hughes and Tom Seward, please call. This is the first discussion on this, so we'll, like we're doing the Northgate Tiff. We'll have you guys back.
Excellent. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Rafe, Ms. Halffield. It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. Thank you very much for your support on, on last year's AEP expansion project. That's actually in construction right now, and I hope that they're taking occupancy by the end of this year. That would be fantastic for the city and the county. We oftentimes talk about how important business attraction is to our communities, but really, it's business retention expansion that makes up a bulk of what we do as economic development teams. And with the city of Delaware, that's even more important as we look at our business makeup. We have over 50 core business employers in the city of Delaware. And in the last five years, over 50% of those businesses have expanded or invested in their business heavily. And it's taken the support of multiple community partners to make sure that those expansions and investments are happening. Tonight, we're here to talk about a very important expansion to us, an expansion of one of our largest employers in the county as well as the city, and that is of the Kroger Distribution Center. So, with that being said, I'm going to introduce to you Thomas Seward, who is the Director of Corporate Location Strategies for KMK Consulting, to talk about the project specifically. And then, I'll talk about the proposed incentive package that we as a city are requesting assistance from our partners at the schools, both Olentangie local schools and the Delaware Career Center in supporting this project as we move forward. Mr. Seward.
Thank you, Sean. Great to be with you all tonight. Thank you for having me. I obviously represent Kroger, and they did want to pass along their apologies for not being here in person. The individual that's really been working with me most closely had a son about 10 days ago, so he's still on paternity leave. As a little background on the facility and kind of what is really the catalyst for this project, Kroger opened this distribution center up in 2002, and it's about 725,000 square feet today. And they've created about well over 600 jobs at the facility. As part of Kroger's Restock Kroger Initiative that they announced in 2017, it's really kind of pushed away a lot of the investment from bricks and mortar, more towards e-commerce and really making sure that they're, they're putting more investment into the existing stores and getting out to their customer to improve the customer experience. That Restock Kroger Initiative is really the catalyst for the project that I'll be introducing today. So, really, the project required us to, to evaluate their Midwest distribution strategy and its distribution network, specifically states Indiana, Kentucky, Michigan, and Ohio, to really determine the most strategic and cost-effective location to make this significant investment. Through this evaluation that we've been doing for a little over eight months now, the company has determined that the Delaware site is the preferred site to move forward at. And should the project move forward in Delaware, the company would invest well over $140 million at the site, made up of about $27 million in the building and about $113 million in machinery and equipment. All the while, maintaining their full-time permanent workforce. I know sometimes when you hear the word is machinery equipment and innovation and the technology, that often means, lots of times it means there's a huge reduction in the workforce, and that's not the case with this project. There will be an additional about 15 to 20 new employees through this new machinery and equipment vendor that they're partnering with. There'll be high-paying jobs that will be there full-time. And there'll be an expansion to the facility of 125,000 square feet, of which a portion of that is about 130-foot-tall building, you can see in the little red square there. So, the project would automate the distribution of dry groceries to the Midwest states using next-generation technology that hasn't been deployed anywhere in the world. So, they'll be, assuming we're able to move forward and get the support that we're looking for, there'll be a really exciting announcement that Kroger and the vendor are working on to announce this technology that they'll be rolling out here at the distribution center. And it'll really be a place where the vendor, as well as Kroger, bring folks that will be working on future projects to see what they're really doing here. This will allow them to improve performance and building a system, top-tier scalability, and help them better serve the retail customers. The investment to modernize and expand the facility will maintain the long-term viability of this site, getting an investment of this amount. And with this technology, really does solidify this facility for many years to come, and will position it well for future growth and investment. So, I guess with that, do you want to introduce that and answer questions?
I'll step back in, I guess I'd talk about the incentive, proposed incentive package here in a moment. Thank you, Thomas. As Thomas said, this is a significant expansion, 120,000 square foot, compared to the existing facility. We've already gone through a zoning case to allow for the tall building to be placed there. The buildings, the zoning in the area did not allow for a building of that height, as you can imagine. It's pretty tall. Unfortunately, we don't have the exhibits here showing actually the way the, oh, you do.
So, we actually met with all the neighbors of the site as we were going through the variance process. Mark was great with supporting what we were looking to do. And so, we actually had a renderings done of the site with the new facility expansion added on. So, you'll see that white box. We've got pictures of kind of, and renderings done for each part of the perimeter of the site, so that maybe they understand what it might look like from their homes, so they can determine whether they want to feel comfortable or if they're not, so.
So, have you converted 130 feet into stories? How many stories does that mean?
Stories to 10 feet?
About 13 stories.
13 stories, give or take, yeah.
Good math, he said.
He could have gone to Olentangie. As you can see, it's...
It's a tall building in the county.
As you can see, it's a tall building, but it's very proportional to the rest of the building. In fact, we had a public meeting with the neighbors just to make sure they were comfortable with this concept, and everybody was incredibly supportive after they saw this, this rendering. In fact, they did, most of them actually attended our zoning appeals for the variance decision, and the variance passed unanimously, so with that support. So, we're very pleased with that, and we do feel that this is a great opportunity to continue to support this project in our community and allow it to stay here in Delaware County for years to come. What will get them there, though, is a financial support package, as you can imagine. As Thomas said, this is a $141 million project, which places it easily in one of the top capital projects in the state of Ohio this year. 27 million of that will be in the building itself, which is an interesting building because it's really a giant robot that has a skin around it. So, one of the first tests we went through was actually a building or is it a piece of equipment? The state indicated it was a building. It did have to follow building code and whatnot. It was not just a robot. So, that actually allowed us to then explore how do we, how do we incentivize such a building? We have many criteria that we look at as a community when we look at incentives. Unfortunately, though, most of those are for business attraction purposes. This is a business retention project mostly for the city. We're retaining 663 jobs in all, which is a very large employer for us, that has a $26 million payroll with it. We don't want to see that, obviously, because as a city, we rely mainly on income taxes for our existence and for our continued services to our residents. So, the project itself, even though it's a huge capital investment, they're only able to commit to the one required job that's required by the state of Ohio for a proposed CRA, abatement on the building, and that will have a payroll of $48,000. Now, as Thomas mentioned, the company that actually operates the robot itself, the automation, will actually be bringing in a team as well. However, that's another company. Therefore, Kroger itself was not willing to commit to those jobs. But that could be 80-plus jobs with the very, as Thomas said, very high payrolls that we would hope to come there. We're not sure how we could tax those. They might be actually sharing their time with other communities, whatnot. So, we, we need to explore as a community what that really means to us financially. However, we really want to retain the 663 jobs, the $26 million payroll. That's our key. What we're proposing is a 100% 15-year tax abatement on the building. That would be about $10 million, 10 and a quarter million dollars in gross savings for the project. You notice I said gross? The city usually works with the school districts when we do tax abatements to make sure that you're made whole. So, in this case, what we're proposing is a 30% school pilot payment structure to be made to the school district every year for the life of the 15 years of the abatement. And that can amount to, depending on how the project is valued, once the county auditor gets a hold of it, it could be anywhere from $100,000 to $170,000 per year, we've calculated. So, you can imagine that's a significant amount of money that can come to the school district during the project's lifespan. And as I always tease, Ms. Halffield, that doesn't go into your school funding formula, as you know. That's, that's money that you can use to do special projects or whatnot, what's important to the school district. To most schools, I know, really enjoy that. That really brings the project down to about a 75% net abatement. So, and that's very similar to what we actually provided to the school, or excuse me, to Kroger when they first brought the project here back in the early 2000s. That actually, that incentive package just expired a few years ago. At that time, I think they were a 75% net abatement, and they were making about $100,000 payment off to the school district per year. And it was a 10-year model back then. So, I think that covers all of the criteria and all the fine points of the proposed package. I will say that in terms of partnership and collaboration, the finance authority was here earlier. They've been great partners in this. They actually are offering a sales tax abatement on the construction materials themselves, which is very helpful to a company that's are making this very huge capital investment.
It might go without saying, but obviously, this wouldn't impact the current taxes that they're paying, which are about $500,000.
That was my question. Thank you for answering it.
So, that is the program that just ended and became whole? And so, this is just for the addition?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Higher law requires, we cannot abate anything that already exists. So, the previous, the existing building becomes base now. That's your base taxes. We can only abate what's above and beyond that.
And it probably should be pointed out that if we don't allow this extension, then they could take their jobs elsewhere.
The investment likely doesn't...
As Thomas said, this is a, this is a model project. You're actually going to be seeing most logistics centers globally go this direction. Kroger's one of the first. And to have that technology here in our community to serve as a model of how this can be done is very important for all of us.
And it sounds like though, that this, this extent, this expansion is another company that Kroger's partnering with. Is that correct?
Sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah.
So, they're, and I apologize for being vague, but they haven't released, and it's still confidential, the name of the vendor that they're partnering with.
Yeah.
But it's Kroger that's making all the investment.
Right.
It's the machinery and equipment, the special technology that they're putting into the building that, that is the other vendors themselves.
It's, I work for the Ohio Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
They're one of my members. So, that's just a really interesting partnership there.
Yeah.
To bring in another company. You guys, they're probably the specialists in that. Kroger knows what they want to do, but that's the way to do it.
Yeah, and Sean, I know I was questioning kind of whether the folks that I mentioned that were going to be onsite full-time, those folks will be there 24/7. They won't be spending their time at one facility and the other. They'll be dedicated there because they'll be needed to help train the people to operate the equipment and help fix the equipment, essentially if it breaks down or needs improvements.
Interesting. And was it, was it more efficient to go up?
Yeah.
Than to go out?
Or is the equipment required?
Horizontal versus horizontal.
It's a racking, like ASR's racking, and so it'll be a general idea of...
Because we've seen some distribution centers pop up across central Ohio, they tend to be more flat and big.
Yeah.
Versus 13 stories.
I think that's because of the human element. If you go on the logistics center, there's lots of people picking and sorting, or this, actually, when you go in this part of the building, there will not be a single human inside there unless there's an issue. In fact, they don't allow humans in there, right? Unless there is, unless there's maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, right up on near the equipment, yeah, absolutely. But they'll obviously still need folks to operate the machines.
Very interesting.
All right. Any other questions? So, again, this will come back for further discussion and then a vote at our next meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate that information.
Thank you guys so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Oh, I just want to say one thing. I've worked in a lot of different communities across the country, and Mark, Sean, and Bob, and the whole support of the community and the collaboration has just been like second to none.
Good.
You guys have a really great team here, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Did you pay them to say that, Mr. Rafe?
He's under contract.
I'm actually not going to be at the memorial on Saturday because I'll be on vacation, so I think I'm already...
The next discussion item is Mr. Meyer to present retire, rehire.
Retire, yes. Good evening. So, this discussion item is part of the state's retirement guidelines when we intend to rehire an Olentangie employee. If you remember, the board accepted Brenda Lucas's resignation as an intervention aide at Liberty High School for the purpose of retirement at its May 7th board meeting. The next week, we sent out a media notice that we planned on having this discussion item at tonight's meeting, which is a stipulation that has to be 60 days prior to board approval. Mrs. Lucas has been with the Olentangie Local School District since 2013 and is a valued member of the intervention team. She works as an intervention aide in the SLC at Liberty High School, so comes highly recommended from the teachers within the SLC as well as the school administration. So, what we plan on doing is bringing her back as a recommended item for retire, rehire at the August 8th board meeting. Currently, I always go over the steps, but so next year, if she was just coming back as regular employee, she would be at step seven. We'll bring her back at step zero, so there will be a savings for the district when we bring her back at step zero. And then, when we bring retire, rehires back, they're on yearly contracts, and they stay at that level. So, obviously, they would get whole adjustments, but they stay at that step.
And I have a question. How many employees do we have that are retired?
Seven. I knew you were going to ask that. Seven.
But this is our first...
This is our first classified.
Classified.
Our seven, we have seven teachers.
It's been a couple of years since I've said that.
Yeah, we have seven teachers. She'll be our eighth employee.
Employee.
Yes.
So, she was there when Don and Brogna was there?
She, she came in 2013. She was at Olentangie and went to Liberty, so she was at Olentangie. She was at Olentangie and then went to Liberty, so she was at Olentangie.
She wasn't at Liberty?
Yeah, I think, I believe.
She'd go over with Dora?
No, I think she went over to Olentangie like in '14 or '15, or Liberty from Olentangie.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
All right. We're now moved to the board action items. I'll entertain a motion to approve board action items A and B. One is to approve the North Gate project. Second is the MOU on the supplemental salary schedule that Mr. Rafe mentioned in his present report.
So moved.
I'll second. Sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Halffield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Halffield, your treasure action item?
Just one today. I'd like to present treasure action item A for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's like, really, it's just minutes. I just want a second.
All right, Ms. Halffield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rafe, would you please present the superintendent action item?
Yes, sir, I'll present superintendent action items A through F for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these superintendent action items? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
The only discussion is our next meeting is June 27th.
At Olentangie.
At Olentangie High School. All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, goodnight, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm going to apply...